I'd like to call the meeting to order for the public work session. Mrs. Burns, roll call.
Mr. Sullivan?
Present.
Mrs. Hollenbeck?
Present.
Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Brochus?
Present.
Mrs. Lafferty?
Here.
Mrs. Marshall?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Sporny?
Here.
Mrs. Walbeazer?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. For the pledge of allegiance.
I pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in its due republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Yeah, so on. Okay. The board met an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters related to confidential personnel matters and pending litigation. Mrs. Burns, any announcements?
No announcements.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. With just 27 days of school left in the school year, things are getting very busy around the district. A couple of weeks ago, I enjoyed attending Maple Point Inclusion Carnival. Great night of fun and activities geared toward our special needs and autism support students for their, and their families. It's a wonderful evening that really showcases what a culture of inclusion is all about, something that we support in our schools. The carnival was partially funded by proceeds from the Maple Point Coffee Cart, which is operated by some of the staff and special needs students every Friday, something we all enjoy here in the district office and around the school and look forward to each week. Last Monday, students in the business, computers, and informational technology classes at the high school participated in the TruMark Credit Union Financial Reality Fair. Students were each given a random career choice with an associated salary and had to make decisions on how to manage their money with such things as a car purchase and loans, housing, food, entertainment, and other real-life expenses. At the end of the exercise, they added up their costs and got to see how their financial decisions affected their lifestyle. It's a great learning experience for our students and I'd like to thank Mrs. Sammartino for arranging this and the volunteers that all helped out. Congratulations go out to Cecilia Shine, who was named the 2024 Bucks County High School Poet of the Year by the Bucks County, uh, Bucks County, yeah, Bucks County, Bucks County, Bucks County Laureate Program at the Community College. She was honored at a ceremony this past Saturday, so congratulations, Cecilia, again. Our Nishamani High School Drama Department is very excited to announce that their theater students have been nominated for the Philadelphia Independence Award for High School Musical Theater for their recent performance of Monty Python's Spanolot. The winners will be announced at a ceremony on May 20th at Temple University. If you want to catch some of our roadies in action this week, they will be performing the comedy Boeing Boeing at the Black Box Theater tomorrow evening through Saturday. That's all I have, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Brings us to the first public comment period. Mrs. Burns, anyone sign up for public comment? Push, push, push that button. Please state your name, where you live, and your occupation, and you're limited to three minutes.
My name's Justin Reed. There you go. Test. Okay. Uh, Justin Reed, 2044 Lockwood Lane, Feasterville, Trevoz, uh, 19053. I'm a firefighter in Philly, also a Navy Reserve, so I don't know if that counts. Um, what was the other?
That's it.
Okay, you're good, you're good. Good, sorry.
Got them all.
Thanks. Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Bowman, appreciate you having me here. Uh, board members, appreciate it, the opportunity to speak. I'm, uh, the father of Emma Reed. She's, uh, enrolled in the SLS program here, here with my wife, Sarah. We, uh, we came into concern, uh, it's kind of been word of mouth and rumors that there's been some merging, some talk of merging the SLS program into the Sandberg School. And we just wanted to express, first of all, we want to express our pleasure with Maple Point. We love it here, we love the staff. Um, everybody has been amazing, and, uh, we, we would hate to see that get moved to Sandberg for a number of reasons that I won't get into here. Um, but also, we, we would also like to express our concern with the communication, like, i- if it is going to, if there's talk of it, we would like to, again, we heard from word of mouth rumors, you know, kind of conjecture. Um, if, if we could have some type of official correspondence and, you know, be able to respond to that, I would, uh, really, really appreciate that, so. Uh, I'm kind of nervous, I don't know, I don't get nervous talking in front of people, but, uh, it's, I don't know. Uh, that's all I have, pending questions.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Reed, thank you for, for coming tonight. Uh, I'm gonna ask you to have a conversation with, uh, Dr. Kane, uh, and then I will follow up with a phone call with you tomorrow, if you can leave a phone number with Dr. Kane as well.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. We do appreciate you responding with, uh, email, we just want to get on the record that we don't want that happening, so, thank you.
All right. Although this is a work session, we do have some action items tonight, so, uh, we're gonna go to those now. Um, Mrs. Hollenbeck, 2.01.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. 2.01, the 2024 through 2024 proposed final budget. Whereas 24 PS 6-687 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code requires that the Board of School Directors prepare a proposed final budget at least 30 days prior to the adoption of the final budget, and to make the proposed final budget available for public inspection at least 20 days prior to the date set for the adoption of the final budget. And, whereas 24 PS 6-687 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code requires that the President of the Board of School Directors certify to the Pennsylvania Department of Education that the proposed final budget was prepared, presented, and made available for public inspection using the uniform form furnished by the Department of Education. And whereas the Board of School Directors has the 24 through 2025 proposed final budget of the school district in the required form and desire that same be made available for public inspection as required by law. And whereas the total revenues equal 201, 282, 621, that's 201 million, and expenditures equal 213, 290, 541, and the millage rate equals 181.675, meaning that there is a tax increase included in this proposed final budget for the 2024 through 2025 year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby adopts the attached 2024 through 2025 proposed final budget presented at this May 20-
7.
May 7th, 2024 public meeting, and the same shall be made available for public inspection and be made available for duplication to any person on request beginning on May 7th, 2024. And that the President of the Board of School Directors is authorized to issue the certification of the Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Department of Education required by 24 PS 6-687. Be it further resolved that the Board of School Directors will adopt the 2425 final budget of the school district, a public meeting to be held on June 18th, 2024.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. We have a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
A second.
Second, by Mrs. Brochus. Any comments, questions?
I have a quick question. Mr. Trense, do we need to do anything or notate that there was a change in the motion due to the date?
There, there was just a typo, I believe it was, it said May 21st, but it's, it's just reciting today's date, so that, that's fine. Just noted on the record.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a second, any comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Brings us to 2.02, Mrs. Marshall.
I'd like to make a motion, 2.02, new internal service fund, Fund 60. Whereas the self-insurance medical is currently committed in General Fund 10, and whereas self-insurance medical should be allocated to an internal service fund for proper tracking of costs separate from the General Fund 10, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors hereby approves the business administrator to create an internal service fund for self-insurance medical. Be it further resolved that the Internal Service Fund will have its designated fund name of Fund 60.
We have a motion on the floor, can I get a second? Mrs. Walbeazer, second. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. 2.03, Mrs. Lafferty.
I'd like to make a motion, fund balance transfer for self-insurance medical, whereas the Board of School Directors previously committed $1,049,060 in Fund 10 for self-insurance medical, and previously committed $5 million in fund balance for the Peasers' obligation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors will transfer $6,49,060 from the committed fund balance to the newly established Internal Service Fund, Fund 60, as of June 30th, 2024, to be used towards the district's budgeted 2024, 2025 self-insurance medical.
Thank you, we have a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Hollenbeck. Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. 2.04, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I'd like to place a motion on the floor, fund balance transfer for capital projects. Whereas the Board of School Directors previously committed $2,807,691 in Fund 10 for capital projects. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of School Directors will transfer $2,807,691 from the committed Fund 10, and $10 million from unassigned Fund 10 to Fund 32 as of June 30th, 2024, to be used towards future capital project needs.
We have a motion on the floor, can we get a second? Second, by Mr. Rodriguez. Comments, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. There'll be a test later on all the fund balances later, so.
Sure. So, the Internal Service Fund, um, the district is self-insured, so it's important to have reserves established since we are self-insured in case in any one year, um, we would exceed what, um, our so-called Cobra or insurance rates are. What the actuaries do is they establish, um, like you were, um, fully insured, they establish a rate for like family coverage, single coverage. So, um, they're predicting those rates, but when you're self-insured, you can have those, um, catastrophic issues happen. Um, we do have a stop-loss policy in place where if any one individual would exceed 300,000, then stop-loss would, um, would kick in. So, we are, you know, self-insured, but then we have, um, security in place so that we wouldn't exceed that 300 per, per incident for, in any one year. Um, so what is recommended is that when you establish an internal service fund, that you always have at least maybe five, six months worth of fund balance there in case you would, um, have a lot of claims or, um, you know, your projections are for some reason, you'd have a lot of, um, prescription or medical claims exceed what the actuaries are predicting for that any one year. And, um, with the capital projects, um, it's just separating the capital projects because we have plans to use that money in the future, so it's just moving it out of the general fund. You're only supposed to have 8% of your revenues in unassigned, and we need to move that out into capital since we plan on spending that money rather than keeping it in the general fund and just spending capital out of the general fund. It just allocates it to capital.
Thank you. Did we? No, okay, so, all right, so we have a second on the floor, we have explanations, so now let's put it to vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. 2.04, 5, Mrs. Walbeazer.
2.05, NCAA Act 93 Agreement Revision to Appendix A. Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the revised Appendix A of the Act 93 Agreement for Cabinet Administration, NCAA, effective May 7th, 2024.
We have a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Lafferty. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. 2.06, Mr. Rodriguez.
I'd like to make a motion for 2.06, administrative appointments. Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of administrative staff. That would be, uh, Dr. Catherine Hinshaw replacing, uh, Mr. Bowman's, uh, position of Director, Director of Secondary Education. This will be effective, uh, July 1st, 2024.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Allen. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Bowman?
Just want to congratulate, uh, Ms. Hinshaw. Uh, she is unable to be with us this evening, would have loved to have been here. She is at her doctoral graduation, uh, in Massachusetts, so, um, again, congratulations to her. We are, uh, super excited to have her as part of our cabinet team here in Nishamani, and thank you for her support.
Thank you. That brings us to 2.07, Mrs. Brochus.
I would like to place a motion on the floor, 2.07, support retirements, resignations. Resolve that the Nishamani School Board of Directors hereby approves the following retirements and resignations of staff.
You can read them, yeah.
Uh, Alma Delone, Ellen Grant, and Diane Klemic, uh, pointing out that Diane has 28 years, uh, with us here at Nishamani.
Thank you. There's a second on the floor, uh, there's a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Sporny. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. 2.08, Mr. Sporny.
I'd like to make a motion, 2.08, support appointments. Resolve that the Nishamani Board of School Directors hereby approves the following appointments of support staff. Uh, one named Kelly Rooney, uh, replacing my friend, Donna Moran-Greiff.
Thank you, Mr. Sporny. Uh, there's a motion on the floor, can I get a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Brochus. Comments or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero. Mr. Bowman?
Yeah, just a, uh, again, two congratulations. Congratulations to Kelly Rooney, um, for being appointed to this position, um, looking forward to her addition. Uh, but congratulations again to Donna Moran-Greiff, my outgoing secretary. Um, was secretary under three superintendents, I believe, correct? So, uh, congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
That brings us to the end of the action items tonight. So, the items for approval at the public board meeting. 3.01, routine business matters. 3.02, annual appointments for 2425. 3.03, summer work projects approval. 3.04, appointment of treasurer. 3.05, facility and energy usage fees. 3.06, depositories of school funds. 3.07, competitive electronic auction bidding. 3.06, cooperative purchasing agreements. 3.09, breakfast, lunch pricing. 3.10, newspapers of record. 3.11, petty cash accounts. 3.12, procurement card use. 3.13, taxpayer bill of rights. 3.04, 3.04, Aramark Food Services contract. 3.15, Sunday facility usage. 3.16, student settlement agreements. 3.17, overnight trips. 3.18, contracted services for 2425. 3.19, BCIU Safe to Say Master Services Agreement, 24 for 20, 24, 2025. 3.02, Bucks County Technical High School Budget for 2024, 2025. 3.21, BCIU Special Education Contracted Services for 2425. 3.02, the first reading of policy. Yeah. Bring a lunch for that meeting. Um, that brings us to our committee reports. Business operations, Mrs. Hollenbeck.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Um, the Business Operations Committee met last week to discuss the budget. Um, and as you can see from tonight's meeting, we approved several of the recommendations that came out of that budget. There are still gonna be two more meetings, May 22nd, 6:30 in this room, and June 5th, 6:30 in this room. We will continue to discuss the budget before it gets approved, the final budget gets approved, June 18th. So if anybody has any feedback or questions or suggestions, I suggest you come out to those meetings. That's where more of the communication happens. That's all I have on that, um, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mrs. Hollenbeck. Educational development, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Nothing new for educational development. Our next scheduled meeting will be next week, May 16th, and it'll be at 6:30 in this room.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
14.
14.
Education is the 14th.
Oh, I'm sorry, correction, May 14th. Look at the policy.
Facilities and planning, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The Facilities Committee met April 11th at 6:30 in this room. Agenda items we discussed was our continuing work on the high school stadium fieldhouse. Uh, we discussed in detail the timeline to completion and we, bearing in mind the football season and graduation. Uh, we got an update on the Court Creek Elementary School with the intention that it will be available for students after winter break, uh, which would be 2025. I believe there was a walkthrough on April 26th by the Facility Committee. Any comments on that? Those that went?
It's under construction. Moving on.
We, we discussed, you know, we, we discussed on social media back and forth a, a couple of things that, that, uh, we saw and wanted to see firsthand, and, uh, since we'd been theoretically hearing about what's going on over there, we thought it best a Facility Committee take a walkthrough, so that's, that was done on April 26th. We received two proposals, uh, yes, proposals for the fire supre-, a fire suppression system for the storage area underneath the stadium stands. Uh, looks like it may be in the neighborhood of 84,000 estimated. Unfortunately, when we put together our, uh, earned, full intentions of the storage, um, the need for the fire suppression system was overlooked, so we're addressing that at the moment. Um, then we had a discussion on the bus patrol program, which raised more questions than it answered. Um, but a representative will be at our next meeting, facility meeting, to answer those questions, we hope, and that next meeting is this Thursday, May 9th, in this room at 6:30. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Policy, Mrs. Lafferty.
The Board Policy Committee will meet next Thursday evening, May 16th, in the boardroom at 6:30 PM. The committee will continue to review board policies within the series review cycle as well as facilities usage policy in the 700 series, along with an advertising policy. So, if you can come out on the 16th, that would be great.
Thank you, Mrs. Lafferty. IU Board, Mrs. Walbeazer.
Uh, the IU Board, the last meeting was April 16th, and, um, I only really have one note from it, which is that, um, they discussed the Bucks County Health Consortium, which is saves district employees' monies on insurance costs, and if Nishamani employees and school district were interested, they're happy to run the numbers for us. Uh, the next meeting is, uh, Tuesday, May 21st.
Thank you. Nishamani Education Fund, Mr. Sporny.
Yes, thank you. Uh, the NEF is accepting nominations for the 2024 Nishamani Alumni Achievements Awards. Uh, the deadline is June 1st. Um, you can find information on nishamani.org/NEF. The NEF Board will be meeting here at Maple Point, uh, next Ma-, Monday, May 13th at 4:00 PM. Uh, at that time, they'll be considering the applications received for their, uh, 2024 scholarships.
Thank you, Mr. Sporny. PSBA Liaison, Mrs. Marshall.
The PSBA is advertising the opportunity to submit stories and apply for a Great PA Schools designation. Um, you can visit the Great PA Schools website to submit stories and apply today. Um, and they are also advertising a grant opportunity through the Office of Community Oriented Policing Services for the School Violence Prevention Program Grant, which is a competitive grant program. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Technical school, Mr. Allen.
Again, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. The Bucks County Technical High School Joint Board and the Bucks County Technical High School Authority were treated to a dinner on April 25th. Um, it was a couple of years, um, in, uh, should I say, we missed out on that. Um, it has been a tradition at the tech school that all board members for all sending disca-, districts would be invited, but with, uh, COVID and a few other technicalities, um, it was put on the shelf for a couple of years, so we are glad to have, have that back, and we are hoping that this was a pilot to open it up in years coming on to other, uh, as it was before, a full event. After, we, uh, moved into the auditorium at 7:30, the Joint Board, and we approved primary, primarily, um, the tech school budget. Go over a couple of quick numbers for you. Uh, we, it is on our agenda for our next board meeting. Um, so, we worked pretty hard on this. Uh, the tech bud-, budget you'll see is in the amount of 33,579,138. As per the Articles of Agreement, Nishamani's portion of that is, am I right here? I'm seeing my... That represents an increase of 5,334, wait, 5,334. I got my numbers screwed up here, I'm sorry. Where did I get 5? The increase, I, I'm reading this incorrectly, I'm sorry, I can't even read my own handwriting. Let me go through that again, because it is important that board members understand this. The total budget is 33,579,138. Nishamani's share is 5,334,056. That is an increase of 29,733 dollars. The total students at the tech school are 1,421. 327 of those are Nishamani students. Also during that meeting, we discussed, uh, capital improvement projects. We are hoping to do, uh, 250,000 of that budget. Um, was put aside, uh, we discussed the need for Security Festival, Bules, uh, rehabilitation of the Annex Building, um, for more instructional space, and we are working on government grants as we speak in order to assist us with that renovation. Uh, also, the Culinary Arts Program would like to renovate one of the classroom space into more of a restaurant space for real-world authenticity for the students that will be walking into that world, that they'll be able to work in, like, a real restaurant environment. Um, and the next meeting, which I did not write down, our next meeting, sorry about that. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Although I was excited about the 29,000 dollar total spend, but that's okay. Yeah. I apologize for that, that's, uh, that's my, uh, my... With that, I'd like to make a- With that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second? Second by everyone? Meeting's adjourned. Oh, yeah, whatever. I missed it, yeah. I think everyone announced them, everyone announced them anyway.